Andrew. This is Welby.
Mrs. Orr, I see Mr. McAndrew in the attendees.
Oh.
Me too Jenny.
Oh, okay. Are we over here now? Okay, there's Mr. McAndrew.
Hey Jenny, how are you?
How are you?
Good thanks.
And this is Welby. We're all set.
Okay, very good, then I will call the Community Relations Committee meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mrs. Orr. Ms. Cruz?
Present.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Present.
Ms. Fox?
Present.
Ms. Hume?
Present.
Mr. Malloy?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mrs. Welby?
Present.
Mrs. Gianni?
Present.
Ms. Gilmartin?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Director Fox, you'll introduce our speaker, please.
Yes, of course. So today we have Laura Johnson from Pennsylvania's for Fair Funding giving us a short presentation. Thank you guys for having me. Will I be able to screen share?
Yes.
Okay, let me just. Out of practice. Okay, so I'm Laura Johnson. I'm a school director in Pottstown School District, which is about an hour, forty-five minutes or so, north and west of Philadelphia. I'm also one of the leaders of Pennsylvanians for Fair Funding. So who we are, we are school board members, we have teachers with us, we have a lot of nonprofit workers and leaders, activists, local and state elected leaders, and community members of all stripes. Basically, if you want to get on board with the equitable funding mission, we're going to find a place to plug you in. What we are doing, the goal is to fight to achieve equitable education funding for every Pennsylvanian student. And I'm just going to go over the problem. I realize that you guys probably have a pretty good understanding of the problem, but I also know these things are live streamed and it's just good to have a kind of a common solid foundation of what's going on. Pennsylvania has the most inequitable funding in the nation. First off, let's just talk a tiny bit, make sure we're on the same page. We're not talking about sameness or equality. We're talking about, in education, each individual student needs to get what they need in order to achieve their best academically and otherwise. So we're talking about equity, not equality in this case. So here is a quick chart. It shows that some states spend more on high poverty districts because they know that more poverty requires more resources in order to give students the same amount of opportunity as their neighbors. However, Pennsylvania, if you look all the way to the left, spends on average thirty-three percent less on its poor districts. We're not talking about just state funding in this case. We're talking about overall fun, overall spending disparity between high wealth and low wealth district. We are spending a lot more on wealthy districts and we are spending a lot less on poor districts when it should be, we should be on the opposite end, and it's not even close. I mean, we are by far the worst in the nation. And by the way, if anybody has a question, please feel free to jump in if I'm not clear about something. So in 2016, Pennsylvania adopted the Fair Funding Formula. This formula takes all kinds of factors into account, including student need, student poverty, English language learners, how sparsely populated a district is because being super rural brings its own costs. And it also takes a lot of community factors into account, like local tax burden and local wealth. So the idea here isn't to tell the state how much to spend, it's to tell them how to distribute what they are going to spend. However, even though we have a Fair Funding Formula, only eleven percent of the state basic education funding is run through that formula. The rest is distributed according to a policy that's called Hold Harmless, and it says a district can never get less than they got the year before. So for over twenty years, the state would increase its education spending every year, and this district would get a little more, and then this district. But the rule was you could never ever decrease the amount from the year before. So even if a school district had lost some of its student population, people moved away, and maybe a new industry moved to town, bringing new wealth, didn't matter. That district would still get the same amount as the year before, which means there's less money left over to make sure you're giving it to the districts that may have increased need instead of decreased need. So as it stands now, eighty-nine percent of Pennsylvania basic education funding is called Held Harmless, which is really the opposite. I mean, it holds communities all over the state harmed. And only eleven percent of the funding is distributed in a way that's equitable. And it's not even evenly distributed in equity. If you want to look at it racially speaking, it's really, really startling. This chart, put together by David Mosankis from Power Interfaith, shows a dot for every school district in the Commonwealth. The diagonal line running up through the middle is the line of equity. If every school district was getting its fair share according to the formula, where say if it needed six thousand per student and it was getting six thousand per student, it would be right on the line, all the way up. However, what we see is that there's a lot of districts above the line, getting more than their fair share, and there's a lot of districts below the line. And what David did was to help to demonstrate the racial bias. He divided the five hundred school districts in the Commonwealth into the half that were the least white school districts and the half that were the most white. The most white school districts, he shaded yellow, and the least white school districts, he shaded brown. And what we can see here is that most of the school districts who are getting more than their fair share are the more white districts, while almost all of the districts who are getting less than their fair share are among the least white districts. And he did that to show that not only is the inequity hurting students, it is disproportionately hurting students and communities of color. Another way of looking at that side of things, and I apologize, I realize this is very blurry, couldn't seem to fix it. On the left half of this page, you have districts getting less than their fair share, and on the right half, you get districts getting more than their fair share. The size of each district's box is how much it is either under or overfunded in terms of total dollars. And the shading of the box is, you guessed it, the shading of either it being one of the most white districts at the very lightest boxes, or the least white districts for the darkest boxes. And again, you can see a clear racial disparity. I mean, it's, it's quite shocking. And even though I've seen this time and time again, I'm still struck by it. You can see Philadelphia School District, not surprisingly, is the most underfunded. If you're looking for Scranton, it's right below Philly and right to the left of Reddium, there on the left. But, and it's not like, you know, the racial disparity isn't one hundred percent, obviously. I wouldn't want to say that it was, but there is still a clear discrepancy there. So what this means for Scranton School District, and I know that you guys, I'm sure know this, but you are, this year, this school year alone, underfunded by the state over thirty-three million dollars, according to the Fair Funding Formula. If all of the money that was being distributed right now was run through the formula in an equitable way, you'd be getting thirty-three million dollars more than you are now, which is over thirty-two hundred for each student. And so I think what I was thinking about when I was making these slides was, what could you have done with that money? If you are anything like us in Pottstown, you have higher-than-average property taxes, and probably lower-than-average teacher pay, facilities problems, less programming than your neighbors, and so there's no shortage of need, it's just that we are not getting our fair share, like you guys are. So, the way that this gets fixed primarily is going to be in the legislature. There are bills to end Hold Harmless, which would mean that all the money then is run through the Fair Funding Formula. There are also bills that say, hey, let's just give more money to the underfunded districts, which I'm never going to have a problem with either. I'm sure you guys wouldn't either. There is also a education funding lawsuit that's often called the William Penn lawsuit that is in Commonwealth Court right now, I believe. And this case likely, hopefully, will go the way of Fair Funding. It will rule that current Pennsylvania education funding is unconstitutional and unethical. It's still going to get kicked back to the legislature in order for them to come up with the actual practical solution. And it's a court case, so it could easily drag out. It already has. So what we are doing as a group, as Pennsylvanians for Fair Funding, so we have two sides to the coin. We educate the public about the issue, just trying to raise awareness. So we run workshops, we did a yard sign campaign back during the election. We use social media quite extensively, have a website, do letters to the editor, and we are working on a art contest, a statewide student art contest that would allow students to kind of show what it means for them in their personal experience to be underfunded. And then we are advocating for specific change. So first, we're educating the public, but then we're also trying to mobilize folks to advocate. So we did the letter for Governor Wolf, which I know many of you signed, maybe all of you, and I very much appreciate that. That letter was calling for an equity supplement. We worked with PSBA to try to get their political platform changed to call for, have a stronger call for equity. We meet with elected leaders, state reps, and senators and that sort of thing. We put out action items. We will put on social media, you know, there's this bill, we need cosponsors. Here's a person who hasn't cosponsored yet, but they should. Here's their contact information. Call them and tell them to cosponsor this. And so we get a lot of people just making phone calls and writing emails that way. And we also use social media, especially Twitter in the case, for this purpose, to just put some public pressure on decision makers as well. So I probably have run through my time. So if anybody has questions, I'm totally, totally up for that. But if I, that's great.
Thank you so much for that. I do have a quick question, sorry. I lag a little bit. Can you just briefly, you did talk about the workshops. Is that something that we could look at doing in the future? I know many of you have conversed about that before. Is that something we could look at doing a community workshop? As you told me, that includes all community members, right? They can all participate and?
Yeah. We could do whatever. I mean, so I have longer sets of slides than what I just showed you. I tried to do like the quickest version I could in that one. But we have, you know, workshops that would be more like a forty-five minute kind of thing that you, as school, you could do this a bunch of different ways. You could host it on whatever platform you wanted, a personal one, a school one, whatever you guys worked out. We would have one of us, possibly me, but possibly someone else come to facilitate, to kind of give the presentation, but also it can work in a lot of, you know, conversation and questions. Typically, our workshops, when we've done them in the past, we'll get a group, maybe fifteen people or so online, and we will not just present information, but also just ask, like, what are you seeing? And what, how has this affected you? Or, you know, there's always a perspective that's new, and there's always some of the more common ones too, but it creates good discussion and then creates a sense of like, well, what can we do to fix it? And that's, you know, taking those steps towards action. So yeah, we'd be happy to help with that.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Did anyone have questions for Laura before we move on to our next item?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much for being here with us, and I think the opportunity to have
Yes, thank you.
workshop will be wonderful because I, I think, you know, as a board, I think we have an obligation to tell the full picture of this story, to demonstrate the full picture of it, because we do get support from the state in a lot of other ways, and I think we want to be very fair about that. And yet, this issue across the board is so important to all districts. There are, you know, certainly those of us who are impacted a little more heavily than others and might have to push a little bit harder, and I think that's a great way to engage community members and also to make sure that we are clarifying the point that, you know, we do realize that the district is supported in ways other than just through the funding formula. So it's a great conversation.
We did have.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, we did have quite strong community support about eighteen months ago. And there were two very well-attended meetings over at the Tripp Community Center. We had at one point, I think we had three or four hundred people come. And the problem, the problem, it's not a problem. Our elected representatives are enormously supportive. John Blake, Carmelins, Artie Flynn, they've all been incredibly supportive of this issue. But what we're trying to do was to divert our pressure onto people who weren't so friendly to us, to make it clear that we were here and we had needs. That need movement died down a little bit, but I think this would be a great opportunity to get, to see if we can reignite the spark in the community that was there eighteen months ago and bring people together. We were going to take a bus, a couple of buses down to Harrisburg at one point. Unfortunately, the bus time we chose, the house wasn't in session. But that kind of activism was very eagerly supported here in this community, and perhaps that's something we should look at doing again. I'm a great believer in, now we know what the issue is. I'd much rather focus on how do we work to resolve the issue. I think the educational part of we're not getting fair funded is pretty well-established. It's the how we put pressure on and what we can actually do that interests me the most.
Sarah, I think you were going to ask a question before.
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for speaking with us tonight. What is the advocacy for changing the Hold Harmless policy or law within the Commonwealth in order to make it more equitable for districts who may be more in need of funding?
Well, so last session, there was a bill number HB nine sixty-one. That was like the big one that we pushed people for, and it basically just said, end Hold Harmless now, all the money goes through the formula, end of story. There was also a bill that phased it out over four years, hoping that that would make it more palatable to districts who might be losing some money. But now that we're in a new legislative session, they have to, I don't know if this is the correct terminology, but they basically have to resubmit all of those bills, make sure all those cosponsors want to stay on and that sort of thing. And those bill numbers almost always get changed. So I don't actually know the new bill number. I don't think there is one yet. But that is something that our group will be working on. As that is established, you know, we'll start to target specific folks who are like, hey, you know what? Your school districts in your legislative district are underfunded, you should cosponsor. And so we kind of strategically go through that and look for those folks then. But unfortunately, I don't have a specific bill number yet.
Thank you.
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you. Did anybody else have a question?
Hi Laura, Jim Malloy. I can't help but ask, I know the focus is on fixing the problem, and I know it's a longstanding problem, but I think the public would be interested in knowing. I know I'm interested in knowing. How did this happen?
So budgets develop year over year, right? So it's kind of messy. You can look back over time and see in, I think it was ninety-two, this Hold Harmless policy went into place, and the idea was, we don't want, we want districts to know what they can expect to receive, so we're going to promise that we're not going to take money away. And over time, what happened was, the funding got distributed. There were different formulas at different times. There were other reasons money was given out. It was, I think, a little haphazard at times, but because anything that happened built on itself, like you could never get less, and because certain parts of the state really grew in terms of student population and others shrunk, that is really part of the foundation of what's going on here. Those districts that shrunk, particularly in the western part of the state, and those are particularly whiter areas, which is part of how we arrive at the racial discrepancy. The student population went down, but the money didn't because of Hold Harmless. And so you had other areas of the state, particularly the south and east, but more urban areas in general, where you had population increase, but not the money there to match it, partly because, partly because of lack of political power, the way political power was distributed in the state, but also just lack of money. You know, if you only are adding new money, you know, a hundred million to the budget, and it sounds like so much money, but in the grand scheme, it's not. If you're only adding that much to the budget, it's not nearly enough to keep up with the need of the growing school districts, and you've already promised not to take money away from the other districts. So it just kind of has been a rolling problem. And another thing, it's worth noting, because sometimes people will be like, you know, talking about the racial bias. People will be like, well, do you think people sat around in a room and just decided they were going to, you know, distribute funds in a racist way? No, nobody I know is arguing that. It is these other factors, population growth or lack thereof, as well as political power, which is a real dynamic that have contributed to the problem. Not intentional racism, although when the legislators did put the new funding formula in place, they were given testimony to know that the current funding was racially biased in its distribution, and they decided to keep it anyway. So I won't let them totally off the hook, but I just figured it was worth noting that it wasn't necessarily intentional as it was done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Laura.
Laura, thank you very much for coming and speaking today. It was very insightful. I'm happy that we're bringing this up. I know we were successful in the past and felt like we kind of took our foot off the gas a little bit, so I'm happy we're talking about it again. I think we do it as a united city. It's going to go a long way. And, you know, now that we have a president whose hometown is Scranton, I hope that helps even a little bit more. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Sure. And if I can just say, I know in Pottstown, we've had some ebb and flow at times of how much advocacy there was because it's hard, especially with something that's driven by volunteers in most cases, to keep up the efforts. Part of what we were hoping was, with starting a statewide coalition, was to be able to have less of that, you know, in fits and starts, and get some stuff that was really steady and rolling. And, you know, any way that your community can, has folks who are willing to jump in on any of our teams, that's going to, that's going to be great. So thank you.
Laura, I think it's, we'll be in touch. To Rose's point, I think it would be really great to look at doing the workshop, inviting everybody who was involved with our last initiatives here, and the two forces together, I think will be amazing. So thank you so much for giving us your presentation, starting this conversation again, and I can't wait to join everybody together and see what we can accomplish. Thank you so much for being with us here this evening.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Thanks Laura.
Thank you Laura.
Thank you.
Director Fox?
Number two. Okay, so now I'm going to refer to my email, just for ease of purposes. I'm going to refer to our board packet that we received on the eighth of January. There was, as you see on the agenda, it is the Community Justice Project. There was an email that Superintendent McTiernan received from Danielle Cortez. It says, I hope this email finds you well. I'm reaching out because I'm a new attorney here at Community Justice Project. We are a nonprofit legal aid organization, part of PA's Legal Aid Network. I'm tasked with helping our Dreamers apply for initial DACA applications, which reopened back in December, and I wanted to reach out to see how we can work together to support our Dreamers. It's my understanding that the Scranton School District has a large Hispanic population, and some of our students could benefit from this information. They've already partnered with other school districts and provided trainings to support staff, counselors, and teachers. Please let me know if this is something that you would be interested in and how we could work together. Mr. Audi suggested that this comes in front of the board to see if we would like Ms. McTiernan to pursue this, get some more information, have those initial meetings. So I'm bringing this forward to see if the board is interested in her starting those conversations. Looking for consent.
Yep. You've got my consensus.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Very good.
Okay, perfect. Ms. McTiernan, you got that?
Put it on your list, right, Missy?
Thank you very much. I will move forward.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much. So the next, we're going to talk about communications and languages other than English. Missy, are you able to touch on that just a little bit from our previous conversations regarding our communications going out in more than just English?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I actually asked Ms. Maggie Cosgrove and Mr. Kevin Carney to join us, and Mrs. Grebeck, actually, you can chime in too. So they have, as everybody knows, I believe, they have created a place on our webpage. And Mr. Carney, are you out there? And I believe you're there. Would you like to share what you have created for us? And Ms. Cosgrove, of course, chime in too. I think they're there. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If I could get the access to share, I'm good there, Bill?
Mr. Delfry, can you make that happen?
Yep, we're good.
Yeah, you should be good, Kevin.
Thank you. That is a picture, a great picture of me with some of our students. I can't wait for that to happen again.
Okay, so you could see the screen with the district webpage?
Yes.
Okay. So what we did was, we wanted to create something a little simplistic for our parents, especially with everything going on with the reconfiguration plan. As you can see on the district webpage, one of the things we have here is the widgets. I know a lot of people do not like the widgets, especially if you're using a device like an iPhone or a tablet. The nice thing that Ed Leo did add to the widgets is a button to X those out, to minimize them. That's a new feature that came about a month ago. So most people will be happy to see those as that's been a pain in the rear for a lot of people, which makes it a lot easier to use those. So going forward, and under the community tab, we put in here the reconfiguration plan, and we broke it down into two pages for English and it's Spanish. So when you do click on that, it's going to bring you to this page here. We, you know, dressed it up a little bit to make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing for parents to look at. And from that page, when you do click on it, and I must have clicked on it at some point, we have click here for English. I went as far as to then also put those buttons in Spanish. Tend to have the habit of saying click here for Spanish, but really, what's the point if we're not putting that in that language? So when you click on it for English, it's going to take you to the English page. Clicking on it for Spanish is then going to take you to completely, everything is in Spanish. The nice part about this is both pages will take you to the actual page where everything is on the recovery plan, from the committee meetings to the minutes of those meetings, who's on the committee. That page is there. One thing I would like to do from that point is to then take that page and also translate that over. That's going to take a little bit of work. Don't mind doing it. But again, it's taking that extra step to then put that into the other language as well for the community. Excuse me. So on both of the pages, they're both done the same way. What's nice is we put the documents right in here. So you just drop them down. Everything's in chronological order. If a parent read this, or they don't want to read that, that's fine. They could come in here. All the presentations that were presented are also in here in a PDF format, just as they were presented. So that's the English version. If we want to take a look at that Spanish version. And then Emilio, Iman, she also translated all of those PowerPoint presentations into Spanish as well for the, or Spanish-speaking population as well. So it's a really nice layout, and I think it's a nice direction that we're going in for the community as well, taking this step to really have this available for our families. And then I can, as you know, we had the ELD portal, which Maggie needs to touch on that. This is also something that her and Shannon Rucker have been working on continuously since they presented this a couple of months ago. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mrs. Cosgrove, can you chime in today? And I know that there was something also that you are introducing to our, I believe, our principals.
Yeah, I'm very excited about it. So Friday, we have a scheduled PD with our principals on rolling out the app called Talking Points. And I have to give Robert MacLeod, we are on the Equity Committee together, so we worked closely together on this, and he's really, he's our math teacher at Northeast, and he's put a lot of, went and sweat into getting this app off the ground and using it himself.
And he's put a lot of, um, blood and sweat into getting this app off the ground and using it himself. It's an app that you could, teachers and principals will be able to text students and families in their own language, and then it translates into the language of the family's preferred choice. And on top of that, the family could text in their preferred language, and we will receive that text in English. So, it's very groundbreaking, and I'm really excited for our district. I think it's going, we, we just keep saying the word game changer, because I really think it'll be a way to communicate with our families that speak, uh, language other than English in a new way, because I know when I taught, the preferred mode of communication for my students was texting, um, along with also parents. So, we're really excited about that, and I have a call, um, tomorrow with Talking Points to just, um, go over some logistics. And then on Friday, we're gonna roll it out to the principals, and then they will then be able to roll it out to their staff. It's very easy to use. That was my biggest concern. Like I said, Robert MacLeod, our teacher, he set it up for his classroom. It's very similar to the app that all teachers use, which is Remind, which is, you know, if they have a test or if there's snow delay, they could just send a quick text to the parents, but, um, we, it's now Remind with, um, being able to send text messages through the link, or with the language of their choice. So we're really excited about that. When I'm on my ELD conferences with other districts, all their districts are using this and sort of the new up and coming app that districts are really, really excited about. Anyone have any questions?
I think, I think as you, I, I think that, um, as the board is, we are constantly trying to figure out ways to better, to get better at communication, number one. And number two, communication in the multiple languages that we have. Um, I, I believe that, uh, at this point, uh, you know, we have the resources in district with regards to Spanish. It's, it's the multiple other languages that we struggle with. So we're constantly trying to find how we can, what, what methods are out there, and how can we improve um, the system that we have in place. Uh, and we definitely, definitely, I will acknowledge that we definitely have to improve. Um, we are constantly learning. And, but I believe that we have people and individuals that are reaching out, trying to improve on a daily basis, and I want to thank, you know, Ms. Cosgrove, I want to thank Mrs. Grayback, and, um, obviously, Mr. Carney has stepped up. Uh, along with many other people, and I don't want to forget anybody. Uh, Mrs. Rucker is constantly helping us also. Uh, so, uh, we have a ways to go. We're nowhere near where we need to, to be with regards to all of the languages within our district, but I can, um, tell you that we are working at it.
And I just wanted to chime in, Superintendent McTiernan, additional, additionally added to the ELD site, the portal, are the can-do descriptors for teachers to use, and also free English classes for parents. So it's an ongoing portal where we want to continue adding, um, information that's current. And I, I, again, I want to thank all the individuals involved in making this happen. We're very excited. In the past, when we had to send a call out to families, we used to have to try and record it in our phone and then hold our phone up to the telephone. Every one call that goes out now is sent directly to Maggie, who then disseminates it to the language guides. And then depending on the school, it's translated into Nepali, Swahili, and Spanish. So calls are sent out, um, in multiple languages. So we're really trying to continue to stay ahead and keep our community updated in their native languages.
Ms. Cosgrove, what is the name of that program again that you mentioned that Mr. MacLeod is implementing in his classroom?
Talking Point.
Thank you.
I think this is all great. Good job. This is great stuff.
And Maggie, the, the ELD portal, there's a dropdown that translates into languages, correct?
Yes, so, um, Kevin Carney and Shannon Rucker, I, I, I'm so not tech savvy, Shannon Rucker really, and so she, she knew that there would be a feature that would, could, um, translate the whole website. And then along with that, there's a YouTube video that, um, so, for example, if you're watching a YouTube video, you could, you could add subtitles and translate the whole entire YouTube um, in the language preferred with the subtitles, and she, there's a video on that, um, on how to do that for the families.
And because Kevin is so, uh, technologically savvy, we, we really inundated him with all of the videos, because what happened was when we went virtual, we were putting all of this information on the website and on the portal in English. And I said, you know, all of these how-to videos are great in English, but let's get them translated into Spanish. So everything spiraled. Any, any, anything parents were asking in the Q and A on how to do something that was translated into a video, uh, we had trans, we had the capability now to translate it into other languages. As easy as how to log on, turn on your computer, how to access the portal for children. So all of that now is, is ongoing on that portal. So it's not just informing and helping our families in English, it's helping all of our families.
And, and can we, oh, sorry, Director Gilmore.
I was just gonna ask, on the website itself, I see a button on the, on the homepage that says Google Translate. But I'm, unless it's certainly possible that I'm doing something wrong, I just hopped on there and tested it. I don't see that it is doing that, is, does it translate?
I'm actually looking at it right now, and it might be something down with it, because that's, that's exactly what we did on the ELD site. So if you're looking at what I just did as you were speaking, um, I went in to demonstrate what you were speaking of. And for instance, I went in here and it translated, but then it didn't refuse to connect. So I'm not sure if something's down. We'll just have to look at that. But this is, uh, traditionally what most school districts have in place to translate the website. So what, basically, the way this works is it's Google Translate, and it takes the webpage and puts it into, it filters it through Google Translate. So it's filtering it through Google Translate and producing it through their application. So that's how it translates the entire webpage for you. Um, and what it does, it will only translate the, the written language of the webpage. It's not gonna translate any videos or pictures that are in the webpage.
Okay, that, that's what I was gonna ask. Thank you.
And Director Gilmore, I don't really want to put Mrs. Ora on the spot, but I will. Right, Mrs. Ora?
Yeah.
I, I know that you, uh, you found, uh, can you explain what you were explaining to me rather than me trying to explain it?
Sure.
Thank you.
I actually think Maggie touched on it with the YouTube videos, with the subtitles. If you're watching a, a board meeting on YouTube tomorrow after it's posted, if you go into the subtitles, is that correct, Maggie, where you said the subtitles? It gives all of these languages that it will translate the, the board meeting. Everything.
And like I said, there's a video on our ELD portal to show the parents how to do that step by step. And, um, Director Gilmore, and I'm sorry, I, I have actually used that tool, um, to translate the Scranton School District website. I'm assuming it must be down or something, because I have seen it work before, so it might be a glitch or something.
I've always noticed it and just never clicked on it, so that I'm glad it's usually up and running. And Maggie, are you, Missy and I had, had touched on this a little bit in, in a conversation we had. Are you aware of any publications where we could be getting some of this information out? You know, are there any language-specific publications akin to a newspaper? Where we should be trying to share some of this information that, you know, we, we send our board statements from time to time out to a, a list of media contacts. Is there anyone there that, that should be included?
Not that I know of. I will, our, our.
Not to put you on the spot. I mean, that's just.
Really respond really well to Facebook. I know that we started ELD Facebook page, and I know Talking Teachers, that's really where the families come. I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have a specific media group, but I know that a lot of our parents are on Facebook, and I know Mina Artis Danny, our principal, she does great, like, live Facebook and, and to communicate with our parents. So, um, I don't, I, I, I think Facebook is a great app. Katie, Katie, are you asking for like, uh, a language-specific, like, newspaper type of thing?
Yes, I'm wondering if that exists.
Yeah, there, there is a local Hispanic, um, uh, newspaper. It's called La Vos Latina. Um, I'll have to, I, it's usually found like in grocery stores and things. I think it's a free publication. I'll have to find one and see what the, what the contact information for the writers there are, but I'll, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then my last question pertaining to the board statements. I, you know, I realize it may not be realistic to translate everyone. That certainly would, would be a goal, but in your opinion, Maggie, Anne, do you think that we should, when we are going to do that, do you think that we should try to get those two documents distributed simultaneously? Does it create confusion if we put one out and then follow up with one that's translated, or does that, like, in the interest of getting a statement out, if we're not able to have it translated until the next day?
Like the side-by-side idea you had, Director Gilmore, and I thought that was a smart idea. The side-by-side version, I think was smart. And then, um, I know for certain school communities, they have, um, a, a high, a high population of Nepali, uh, so that we can also further get those translated for those school communities. But I like the side-by-side idea. I don't think it makes a, a difference, but if, for me, I like the side-by-side. That's just a personal preference.
Okay.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for all of that valuable information. So great to actually see it as well. Um, so the, the next item, I will move very quickly so we can get on to our work session. Um, the next item we have here is Success Starts Here. This could be a very quick conversation. It says process setting and policy implications. Um, so this is a conversation, uh, towards Missy and, um, others who you have working. So, um, Success Starts Here, we've talked about a few times before. In conversations, we were wondering if, uh, Michelle is PSBA, representative, and for me, as Chair of Community Relations, if we could work together to, um, get positive press releases out to Success Starts Here in coordination with, I believe you said before that Rob Noon does it, and then, sorry, I know I talk fast. So we are hoping to work together to get those publications out to Success Starts Here more often, maybe once a month or so. And then also hopefully that can result in us getting those out to the newspaper at the same time. So basically, we're asking for, um, just a conversation if, if me and Michelle and Rob could work together to get those positive press releases out to Success Starts Here and such, and your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Um, I, I know that, you know, I ask each of the schools to submit to the school notes, uh, and, and they submit those to Mr. Noon, and Mr. Noon submits them to the paper. So I, I, I believe that this would be a, an easy process um, to add that in, and I, I'm sure the schools would love it. Uh, and I'm sure that, um, Ms. Sarah Hopias Hall would love it, because I know that she's always looking to for us to provide positive news to the newspaper. Um, so I'm, I, I think it's a great idea. And whatever you need.
Thank you so much.
Do, or whatever, yeah, whatever you need me to set up or do, I'd be happy to do that.
Wonderful, wonderful. Michelle, I hope you're okay with that. I know we've touched base a little bit, but um, also, um, and then that says policy implications. So, um, it has been brought to attention that we should also look at policy 911 and, um, regarding this, um, which we are going to bring up in a, a future policy committee meeting. Right, Katie? Do I need to touch further on that, or is that?
You know, as we talk through and establish a, a process to get all of this information where it needs to go and make sure we're communicating and not duplicating efforts, I think also there are some policy implications uh, that relate to communication. And I believe that there are some contradictions between a Board Operating Guideline and Policy 911. So I think when we have that policy committee meeting, hopefully next month, we can get that scheduled, whether it's a, a standalone or on the evening of the work session. That we can make sure all of those documents match up, and then, you know, everything is, is as we all wish it to be. So, we'll put that, put that on your list too, please.
Thank you so much. Um, does anybody need clarification on that, or are we okay to move forward? To the last item. Okay, so, um, the last item we're gonna speak about, um, quickly is just in-person meetings. Um, Katie, did you want to start a, a little bit of a conversation on what we're, what direction about this?
I think we, we've all touched on this, and we wanted to make sure that we were having this conversation as, as a group publicly. I know many emails that have come through to us have referenced in-person meetings as it relates to overturn to hybrid or, or any sort of in-person learning. And, you know, at, at this point, I think we all know we're not making that decision at this moment. We will continue to monitor, to watch the vaccine progression, all of those things, but I, I just wanted to make it clear that we are not, we are not ignoring those concerns, and, you know, we certainly see those as very valid points, but from my perspective at this point, we are able to offer greater access to the meetings, notwithstanding technology limitations. I mean, I, I certainly don't want to ignore the fact that not everybody has the internet at home or a computer at their fingertips. I realize those are challenges that, that many of us face, but, you know, I, I think in terms of gathering together, and if we were to meet in person, we already know that we have some audio issues and some acoustical challenges. I think to add mask-wearing to that could really complicate things. And, you know, I, I, I for one, and, you know, I, I hope many of you agree that I feel a little more ease of communication and being able to see all of your faces and not have to, to worry about having a mask on or, or being sure that we are six feet away from one another, and also not having to limit attendance. I, I think we would really have to make sure that we were putting parameters on that, that, that preserved people's right to come forward and, and speak at meetings and, and see what was going on. But, I mean, I imagine a scenario where we can't have the same ten people, if we have to limit it to ten people. It's your turn this month, it's your turn the next month. I, I mean, I just see that as a very cumbersome and, and complex and potentially unfair scenario. So, it's not that no thought has been given to this. Those are just my, my reasons. And I, you know, certainly am, am open to anybody else's thoughts on this, but that's my rationale at this point.
Thank you. Um, like, we can definitely revisit this, um, as often as we need to. So if we have further conversations about returning to the classroom and such in the near future, we can definitely immediately bring this subject back up, right? Again, like you said, this isn't a vote or anything like that. We just want the public to know that this is something that is staying on our, our minds and in conversations.
Right, and the motivation behind remaining in the virtual setting at this point.
Yes, our last video had 2,000 views from just last week on YouTube.
And now that we know that it can be translated with subtitles, all the better.
And I think it's good that we're bringing this up. That we're telling the public that if we're going to consider sending our, our educators and our staff and our students back into the schools, at that time, we would consider going back in to have some kind of a meeting. I know we have some big areas. Um, I know, like, Scranton High's Auditorium, I don't know how much you could fit in there and spread out, but I think that those are all things we, we should consider, because I, I wouldn't be comfortable sending anybody back into the schools or voting on that if we weren't willing to meet in person. So I think it's good that we can have a future discussion on it.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I think it's very important that we continue to monitor the guidelines, and, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not putting any if-then scenarios into play here. Just that it would be, i- it is something that we would continue to discuss. It's not absent of all of these ongoing conversations.
And just a point of personal privilege. Um, our teachers and our students are quite young. I personally would find it very conflicting to have to try and come back at this point into, into a meeting. I have, um, I mean, let's face it, I'm the grand old lady of this committee. I think I out, uh, I think I've got 20 years on all of you. Uh, that would be very awkward for me, uh, to have to come into meeting until such times as we had greatest things, and it would mean, it would mean, you know, I don't know what, what the implications would be, but it's, I, what, what, that concerns me on a personal level. It also concerns me that we would need to limit audience attendance.
Yeah, I, we just have to continue to.
All conversations.
I'm sorry, Catherine, go ahead.
No, no, I was just saying, all, you know, that's all factors we would keep in mind and play. And, you know, if, if that did come up, I'm sure that we can take a look at our policies and how, you know, we need to potentially adjust things and such moving forward, so, for, for certain. Um, and then, uh, sorry. Go ahead.
Do you have something else?
I just was not sure if we needed to touch on, um, the donation letter at all or not, or if we're okay for that.
We actually, that will also, we'll add that to the work session agenda, and we will discuss that as policy. To catch everybody up, so we're, you're not in suspense. The process for accepting donations, grants, et cetera, is a little, we're, we're trying to make sure that everything is documented, but some things are happening retroactively. So we just want to speak from, you know, we will keep things status quo at this moment. So we just want to speak from, you know, we will keep things status quo at this moment so that we're not holding up the process. But we will speak from a policy standpoint about, do we need to reword these documents? Do we need to flesh out a timeline just to make sure that everything is gelling? So that somebody doesn't say, well, you, there was an article in the newspaper in October that somebody did this nice thing and you didn't sign the paperwork until January. So we just want to make sure that all of that is together. So I think we're, you know, I, this is all positive. T crossing and, and I dotting. And to that end, I just want to mention, I know I include, included this in my president's report, but Ms. Zaleski asked if I would be willing to participate in a virtual field trip about what I do here in my business and my career path. And I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that. I did speak to Mr. Audi to make sure that he didn't have any ethics concerns. Because of, of course, you know, we'll be here in my business, but it, it will certainly not be a commercial. It will just be about what we do here day in and day out and how I wound up here. So I just wanted to, you know, if anyone has any concerns, any hesitations with my participating in that, I certainly understand and would not be offended. But I'm very flattered that Ms. Zaleski asked me and we're also going to connect her to the Trip family homestead, which is particularly of interest to the students at Isaac Trip. And hopefully we can get a tour going over there. So that's, that's my story on that. Catherine, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then I will take a motion to adjourn the Community Relations Committee.
Make that motion.
Second? Second.
Aye.
And we will call the work session to order and begin with a transportation discussion from Mr. Bob Shock. Thank you for joining us, Bob, and for bearing with our always delayed schedule.
Well, good evening. I'm going to start by sharing my screen. This will just take a minute.
Could we just have an introduction of Mr. Shock?
Sure.
I'm just not sure where he's from.
Yes, absolutely. Dr. Finan, Mr. Shock, would you like to introduce yourself?
I can introduce myself. So I've been working with the public financial management for about six years in the financial recovery districts throughout the state. And that's on behalf of PDE. Often that involves detailed support service studies and many of them involve transportation. So back in about 2018, I started with Scranton and did a little bit on transportation. And tonight's a bit, an update on that presentation. I had been a business administrator in five districts out Pennsylvania for 32 years. And four of them were districts over 10,000 students, two of them urban. So with that, I'll get started. So as I mentioned, there was a presentation on strategies to improve transportation in March of 2018. And largely we focused on utilizing seating capacity fully, assigning more than one bus run to each morning and afternoon bus route, combining more small loads and small schools under the same bus if the bell times made that possible, and address some inconsistencies, inconsistencies we knew about with walking distances. So our approach has largely been to get the Transfinder software fully implemented. That's involved extensive training. And then we formed a committee, there's seven or eight of us that meet half an hour to 45 minutes weekly to keep the progress going. Of course, during this period, we've dealt with rerouting transportation due to a building closure and the COVID situation in the past year. So one of the things we looked at was the eligibility to ride buses in this inconsistency of the walking zones. There are several guiding principles. One is the state school code that translates into the state transportation subsidy that pays for some of your transportation costs. And that calls for giving rides to students within 1.5 miles if they're elementary, two miles for secondary. In addition, the Federal National Highway Transportation Safety Administration has dealt with safe school walking zones and state safe bus stop locations. In addition, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation has an extensive list of criteria for safe walking zones to and from school. We also took a look at the crossing guards where more than 60 had been assigned years ago. These are paid half by the district, half by the city. So let's talk about the walking zones. First of all, we wanted to address the inconsistency and apply these uniform standards. PennDOT had been in the district in the seventies and eighties looking at situation. But of course, some things have changed. When they look, they look at the amount of traffic, the width of the sidewalks, whether there are traffic signals. We also, as I said, looked at the crossing guards. We identified about a dozen situations where there was inconsistency in applying the walking zone limits. And we use the features of the software to identify these limits. And we'll get into some examples in a minute. We also used a geographic information system with satellite photos and average daily traffic counts. We visited road segments, reviewed the condition of the walkways, took photos, counted traffic volumes, and then met in, as a committee with people from various perspectives and including some who'd lived in those neighborhoods to review each situations. So let me show you the kind of detail we went into. So this is Northeast Intermediate Bus 75. We're focused on four stops, six, seven, eight, nine on that bus. We knew that the walking from Olive Street and Wheeler to the school was 1.1 miles. It takes a walker about 22 minutes. Our decision in that case was to continue to ride. Then we went to Bus 78. We're looking at one stop, stop seven, eight tenths of a mile. Took about 17 minutes to walk. Google Maps will give you several alternatives, different times for each alternative. Our decision again was to ride. Then in light of the 2.0 mile distance for secondary students, we looked at a situation at 1.7 miles. It would have required students to walk in these areas. We knew there were many issues there as they would walk to school. So we did extensive analysis on that. This also led us to the conclusion that since sixth graders, generally considered elementary, are in the intermediate schools with secondary students, that we would go to the 1.5 mile limit and not use the two mile limit. So we, in this case, we actually took traffic counts and looked at all kinds of factors along one route and then another walking route. And the decision was continue to allow them to ride buses. Bus 73 at Armstrong involved 18 students, seven tenths of a mile, 15 minutes. We were looking at crossing guards here, the decision there was to walk. Bus 33 at Kennedy involved 58 students, a whole bus of students gets on here. But we were concerned about the walk through this area, seven tenths of a mile from here to the school. But there were some concerns about, very specifically, the condition of any walkways from this point where the bus pretty much loads entirely up to the school. So that is the level of detail that we were working with as a committee. And these are decisions that involve all the criteria from the guidelines that I cited initially. And you can see that we made a variety of decisions based on the specific circumstances. Now let's talk about crossing guards because even if.
Mr. Shock, if I could ask a quick question, when you're saying at the time of the walk, but did you actually walk the route or are you just going by what like Google is saying, like an estimate?
Like if you put in. We're using the Google estimate in those cases. So for example, here, Google is estimating 14 minutes if you follow the dotted line. If you take one of these alternative routes, it could be 17 minutes. So Google gives you a couple of options, just as they do if, if you were driving.
Okay, thank you.
But we actually walked some of those when we felt it was necessary to look at the condition of the sidewalks or the lack of sidewalks. So the crossing guards had not really been reviewed in a number of years. After we reviewed them in the methods, we'll show you in a minute. We're making recommendations and working with the city to reassign somewhat to better locations. So this is using a geographic information system. We identified all of the crossing guard locations, color coded them by school. And then we also had the average daily traffic volumes shown in colors. So the yellow here is the busiest traffic. And then less busy even on the main arterial throughout the city. Then we got to another level of detail with that. We can zoom in and we can get very specific traffic volumes on side streets. So we knew where the crossing guards were, what school they were assigned to, where the schools were, and the traffic volumes right around the school. So this is the information we use to work with the city to ensure that we had the crossing guards at the right location, making the walks safe. Now, as an update to what we're doing in terms of the cost effectiveness of the system, we're trying to be sure we use the seating capacity fully, use the time available between the bell times of one school and the next, and that we use vehicles for multiple runs throughout the day. And we're getting into some advanced routing techniques at this point in time. So that starts with taking a look school by school. Here we've got three examples. Every dot here is a bus. And what this means is this bus here has 72 students and is on the road for 20 minutes. This bus has about the same number of students, but is on the road for more than an hour. The idea is good routing will attempt to get a tighter cluster of these dots so that is the ride times are more equal. And that involves moving a stop from one school to another and otherwise looking route by route and seeing if you can do a better job. We'd like to see more consistency in those with the aim to equalize the times. In doing that, one thing we realized is the first tier in the morning has more elementary buses than are needed in the second tier. What this allows us to do with advanced routing techniques is if there is a tier to run that's too long to get, assign it to an elementary bus that has room, all these buses are not used for a second run. Then if we split one of these, that takes maybe 40 minutes, 50 minutes into two runs, we can do that at no cost because you're already paying for these buses on a daily basis. You're just not using them. If you were using them, the intermediate runs, the intermediate would have more buses. So the way we think about that is we look at every bus and what it's doing throughout the day. So these columns are five-minute increments. They're color coded, red for elementary, green for intermediate, different colors for non-public and, and charter schools. Now, this shows you just a sampling of your buses, about a third of them. But as I look here, the question comes up, why can't we take this run to Kennedy? It's only doing one run and move it down to this bus here. And it would then have two runs and we wouldn't need that bus saving $50,000. Same thing here, there's this DePaul school might be able to be done here. In that case, you would have one tier to the non-public, a second tier to the elementary, a third tier to the intermediate, which is common in other districts. So that is possible in the morning, not possible in the afternoon unless you use one of those unutilized elementary buses in the afternoon to divide this into two runs. The example of that is here, where I'd like to move this because it's only doing an intermediate school, only one run each morning and one run each afternoon. I'd like to divide that into two 20 to 25 minute runs and slide them up and have them done by one of these buses. So what you see here is just on about a third of your buses, I'm finding three very good possibilities to save you $50,000 every time we can do that kind of a reshuffling. So transportation is complex. It changes. If you think about your intermediate school, every year the eighth graders leave and new sixth graders come in, meaning that two thirds of your students change in one year. Therefore, the buses need to be reconsidered every year. It's not cost effective to expect the buses to run the same routes year after year because the students change that dramatically, two thirds every year at the intermediate school level. We're now starting to focus on special ed, again, looking for the eligibility for door-to-door service and vans rather than buses. We're looking at some instances, we believe there are too many stops too close together. That adds to the time of the runs. It also can be annoying to, to commuters. We want to streamline the unloading and loading practices so that we can get that bus on to its next run quickly. And then there's some other advanced routing that will occur in the next year. For example, we have empty buses that are returning into the district from a distant non-public school and they may be able to swing out of their way and pick up and a special ed student or a homeless student or some other special circumstance. So with that, I complete this presentation and would be available for any questions or comments.
Mr. Shock, I have two questions right now. How many students is this change going to affect? And what's the overall cost that we'll be saving?
Okay, it's several hundred students. The overall cost is a little difficult to compare because you have fewer students being, riding the buses in general, you have fewer students in, in your total enrollment. So the numbers are down. If you look at those examples on that colored timeline, there are still opportunities that we need to consider as you go back to normal operations. So I believe I showed you three possibilities there. There are going to be several more. I would assume we could achieve a three or four bus reductions right there just by juggling those and assigning more than one run to a bus. So that would be several hundred thousand dollars then.
The financial implications weren't really the driving force behind this work. This was more about route efficiency, which of course will have a, a financial impact. And that's, that's something that can be calculated as part of a budget discussion and will even extend into an, an RFP, which is eventual goal of this work as well.
Did, did we go back to the vendors and ask if they can help out a little bit? You know, with these, you know, so we didn't have to make these decisions?
We have been working with vendors throughout this process. And I think three or four years ago, DeNaples began to offer some double runs. Redtop with the vans is not willing to do that. They priced theirs as single runs. So when we put out the request for proposals for transportation contractors, we need to tell them how many vehicles we believe we need, a, a good, solid estimate, both in terms of vans and buses, and then they can price accordingly. We pay about half as much for the vans as the buses, but we're only getting single runs from the vans. And very, those vans are limited to nine passengers.
So we haven't asked recently though. You said around three or four years, but nothing recently?
I think it's, it's, well, we've worked with the, we've worked with them throughout and they are willing to work with us. For example, in the case of the vans, what they are willing to do is say, if we do a double run, it's not going to be two times what you're paying for a single run. It's going to be something less than that. But at this point in time, we have put all the special ed students this year with the pandemic onto buses. And so we're running actually very few buses and no vans right now.
So if they did that, we would still, you know, have a cost, but it still would be a, some sort of savings, right? Not the maximum savings, but still some sort of savings.
Correct. And we've had that discussion with the van. So if we needed to reopen normally and run vans this year, there would be some ability to run double runs at less than two times the price of the single runs we're paying for now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shock, could I ask you to stop sharing your screen unless we have some more to do? Do we have more on your screen?
No, that's it.
Oh, thanks. I, I'd much rather talk to you than to the, to the page.
Actually, I, I did want to ask one question about one of the slides. And one of them, Mr. Shock, you said for every three buses we cut, we save 50,000? Or did I misunderstand that?
No, for each bus, you're paying about 50,000. I think I can answer that without going back to the slide.
Okay.
So I give you. So I give you those three examples on that colored timeline. And all we're doing there is assigning a run that's now being assigned as a single run to a van or a bus and assigning it to a vehicle that has time available. So every time we do that, we're saving over three hundred dollars a day. So in those few examples I gave you, there's the potential of saving uh, over fifty thousand dollars on each of those. So that's why I said, you know, if we found six or seven of those district wide, we're going to have to test them carefully to be sure it actually works. And then I would assume maybe half to two thirds of those would work out fine. Now you have to realize the situation's changed. We have a lower enrollment than prior years, next year's enrollment, and the location of students will be different. Uh, so what I'm really showing you there are the tools and the principles of cost effective bus routing. And so your routers, as they're doing the work, need to be sure that they have the right number of buses going to the schools, that the ride times are relatively equal. And that they're assigning two or more runs to each bus uh, as they assemble the routes.
And would that be for all of the, the current students that are on bus routes?
Yes.
Yeah. So for all the, the students that are currently on the bus routes, that would be a more efficient way to run the buses. That's what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. And can I just ask you, who, when you refer to we or the committee that was formed to implement this, who's, who's on that committee? You don't need to give me names, but maybe titles or?
Well, we have several central administrators, uh, Dr. Fine and uh, Mr. Laffey. Uh, it's several of the assistant principals have been extremely helpful. They went out and did traffic counts. Uh, they've uh, become trained on the software as well as the transportation staff. So it's about seven or eight of us are meeting weekly in a, in a Zoom meeting at eight o'clock on Thursday morning.
Is this part of recovery plan?
Yes.
All right. So I guess Dr. Fine, I gotta ask you this question. You know, there's back and forths, you know, debate on is this plan amendable? So is the recovery plan amendable? And if so, is it remenable by the board or do you have to make the, the change to it?
I make the change to it. It is amendable. But um, it's amendable when we come up to a key finding that is not, has not proven to be appropriate or effective. And any of the initiatives, if we went back to the student transportation section of the recovery plan, which begins on page, uh, I believe eighty-six, uh, much of what Mr. Shock spoke about this, this evening began way before I arrived in the district. Because this was work that began in two thousand eighteen. And you will find some of the results and the data that was collected during that time in the recovery plan, which is a continuation. So um,
Is this decision final or are we able to amend this if we want?
What decision final? I'm not clear on your question.
Like, I mean, there's several hundred kids who aren't going to be able to get a bus. We're not, I don't have any savings right now. You can't give me a figure. Um, and we haven't reached out to the vendors lately. Is there a way we can still work on this to try to provide busing for everybody? I know that I know what state guidelines, but we just had somebody, you know, give us a presentation about the fair funding. We saw how, you know, that calculation is wrong. And it's affecting us and it's, and so I don't really trust state guidelines too much.
Okay, you've never bussed every child in this district. So if you're asking me now, do, can we amend a plan or can, that's your policy. You would have to change your policy about busing. But I, I, again, I'm a little unclear on your question. But if your question is about, can we provide, you mean, can the district provide busing for every child in your district? If that's your question?
If, if somebody in that walks on needed it.
I, I think it's more the, the letters that went out. Maybe that's what you're referring to, Sean, that the students, the families that receive letters.
I think part of the issue though, if I may, I, and I, this was a question I was going to ask Mr. Shock. When, when you highlighted some of those scenarios. You, you based the decision to ride on a variety of issues. Could, could you reiterate that again?
Sure. So what we would do would take a look at the computer map, which has all the stops and all the students at on their route. So every route into that school is different color coded and we know the stop numbers. And so when we saw that we were transporting students close to the school well within the one and a half miles, then we took a closer look at it. Uh, in terms of was there any justification for doing that? And the justification would have to be one of those criteria in that PennDOT uses or that the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration recommends. And so these are dozens of different criteria that we went out and looked at. Uh, and when we determined that we felt the route was safe for students to walk to school, then we would make them walk. If we felt there wasn't a way to have them safely walk to school, even with a crossing guard, then we provided rides even well below the one and a half mile limits.
What, what do you consider safe? And what, what factors?
Okay, so the type of situation that these guidelines are looking at. Uh, the traffic volumes at the time of day that students are walking. The condition of any walking path, whether it's a paved sidewalk, the width of the road they would be crossing. Whether there's any uh, traffic signal there. Is there a traffic, is there a crossing guard there? What is the traffic, traffic speed along the road? And uh, what is the sight distance uh, at that traffic speed? So if the, if it's a forty-five mile an hour road, uh, even if it's two lanes, but you're at a curve and students would be in jeopardy, walking along the road at that curve, then that's a, that could be deemed a hazard. So that's why I showed you some of those examples where we were looking at the sidewalks and we actually walked uh, along those stretches to determine.
What about people living in, in the community or in that neighborhood? You know, we get Megan's Law, the register sex offenders updates all the time. Was that taken into consideration?
If, when you look at that, uh, first of all, you have to realize that those locations change regularly. So the school districts have not been able to uh, really work within that in an urban setting. If we, we did actually look at that information for Scranton. And if you're attempting to uh, do all of your walking and even your stop locations with that in mind, knowing that it would change from time to time, you would have a very difficult time to run your transportation system.
Mr. Shock, your guidelines also don't take into account, um, like, so, like, like, certain aspects, like for instance, like crime rates, certain neighborhoods. Unfortunately have reputations for having higher um, crime areas than others. The, the guidelines don't take those into account either.
Uh, not the transportation guidelines, but you know, you're both referring to different types of uh, legal crime issues.
Well, safety. I'm referring to safety overall. That's part of safety.
Mr. Shock, aren't there some references to that? Uh, some information that I read on the Department of Transportation's website, I believe. I've looked at a lot of different information. So don't quote me on, on where it came from, but I do believe that some of those other factors certainly might not have been considered by this committee, but may be considered by the Department of Transportation in those hazardous route designations.
Well, PennDOT has over thirty criteria that they look at when they're out looking. And I believe uh, some of those uh, are related to uh, various infractions.
Mr. Shock, I, I have a couple of questions if, if everybody's okay. Um. When was PennDOT last in Scranton to review the hazardous routes? Do we know?
Okay, uh, the reviews we have on file, there are several dozen of them are from the seventies into the nineties, I believe. Uh, then we met with three representatives from, from PennDOT several months ago.
Okay. So did the, so did PennDOT, when you met with them a few months ago, that they did a complete review of the city and?
No, they, they, when you, when you request PennDOT comes in, you have to provide a three or four page application, uh, making the case for it to be determined hazardous. And as we looked at situations, we had in these cases already dealt with the a rioting, we were making decisions to have those students riot. Now, we did have all the past designations and we concurred that those past designations were correct.
Okay. Um, and you had mentioned in your slides about um, sixth grade being considered elementary. And so they, for Northeast Intermediate, they fell within the one point five mile. Uh, we're talking about moving fifth graders. Um, so I'm, I imagine how does that impact busing if we have a school where potentially two grades are within the one point five mile and two grades are within the two mile radius? How does that impact busing routes? Do we have a way of using TransFinder to accommodate for that? And um, just wondering how that would impact routes?
We, we made the decision to use the lower number one point five.
For, for north, for the middle schools in general?
Correct, because we had a one grade level of students considered elementary sixth grade.
Okay.
Mr. Shock, I, I'm beginning to think there's an equity issue here too, because there may have been some students who were walkers, who were within the one point five um, mile limit on a designated safe route. And that somehow um, over the years, some people who have been riding buses through no fault of their own, who've been allocated bus routes and all of those things. There is an equity issue. I think that everybody who has a safe walking route to school should be walking that route, that it's a bit unfair for some students to be walking where students in a similar situation on a safe walking route are not. And I wonder if that would on one point lead us open to equity issues. The second, um, the second point I'd like to make is that um, we really need to be, you know, it sounds to me like you and the transportation committee have gone to extraordinary lengths to do the research to, or I suspect on the side of caution, if you felt that a route was not safe to opt for the busing, you know, to, to tip the needle towards safe, you know, bus transportation, if you had any doubts at all.
That's correct. Yeah. Safety is a primary consideration. So whenever there was ever a marginal decision, we aired on the side of safety in, in writing.
And just more generally, can you just give us a brief view of what TransFinder does? Does it work? You, I seem to get the impression it works at the level of the individual student?
Yes. So it has all of the normal capabilities of a computer mapping system. Pinpoints every student by latitude and longitude uh, to be very accurate. And then it just is a database management system that assembles these students to the nearest stop and then assemble stops onto bus runs. And then assembles bus runs into bus routes, morning routes, afternoon routes. And then has all the reporting capability to inform drivers, parents and everyone else uh, what the route is and what the time of pickup is.
And so, and so that's um, so, so the letters for, for instance, the letters of buses have not, for bus riders have not gone out yet. Um, I understand that that might be because we're still finalizing the bus, the route times and the stop times to get them right and that we really want to get those completely accurate before we send them out?
Well, we're still working um, on it and some of these concepts uh, that I mentioned tonight, excuse me. So we have not implemented those areas where I showed the arrows at this point in time. So we would, if we were to start the routes tomorrow, we would be starting them without any of those three options of the arrows being implemented. Now, this, if we implement under a hybrid system, you're only expecting half the students to ride those buses. So we're really developing routes for the full normalized system in part because we have to put a bid out that gives a accurate estimate of how many vehicles we need.
Mr. Shock, I have a quick question. Who is on the, this transportation committee? Is it made up of parents or any members of the community or is it?
No, it's all school staff, school employees.
And, and maybe I can help you, Mr. Shock. It, it, we, it grew over time. It began with Kathy Bevelacqua and Gina, I think Gattelli is her last name. Um, and of course, Mr. Shock, um, Ian Tyson is on, on uh, at, also on the call. I'm on the call. Pat Laffey's on the call. Paul Doherty's on the call. Julie Maloney's on the call. Uh, we've engaged um, on occasion, Chris Laser and Tim Wolfe and Kevin Carney's on the call. We have, I believe that's it at this point, but on occasion we've asked our assistant principals to walk, do, um, do a sample walk and we timed it. We had them counting cars and counting uh, traffic at uh, particular times, arrival and dismissal times. Um, this has been a very involved process. The committee began, uh, again, a, a long time ago and has continued and it's grown. But what has happened is along with everything, and I, I think uh, Director Hugh stated it correctly. We found a number of inequities that would um, indicate that favoritism had occurred through the years and people were granted bus rides who were very close to the school. And some folks who were further away were not granted that. And then when we interviewed, the committee interviewed, um, people working in the buildings. We were um, given more information that did concur with that assumption. Once we uh, received some of the data. On top of that, what, what also occurred, and this is a very long process, as you can see. Um, we did have a number of those people that I mentioned who were on the call basis. Also trained, as Mr. Shock said, by TransFinder. So they could actually get into the data into and, and handle it um, uh, with their system. But we had a very difficult time with our e-school, power school system talking to TransFinder. That was not solved until October. I cannot tell you why. I do not know why. I, I've never figured that out. But we struggled with getting accurate, accurate names and accurate uh, data on where students lived. One of the issues that again, and I'm, I want to direct your attention to your district. You have eleven elementary schools that are in the community that are within walking areas. And the advisory committee has often said they like preserving many of those uh, elementary schools. Not all of them can be preserved, but they like that. So when we talk about, um, I think I heard Director McAndrew state uh, something to the effect of transporting every child. I don't know that your roadways can handle transporting every child to every one of those elementary schools. Um, they are within communities and one of our challenges are the size of your roads with cars parked on both sides to be able to maneuver seventy-two passenger buses. That is a challenge in many, many roads. You don't have alternate street parking, et cetera, that many urban areas have. So that is something, again, as a point of consideration when we're trying to work through this process. But I, I tell you, and I think you saw the detail that Mr. Shock showed you this evening. It is a very long process and we were not working with accurate data to start with. Just getting the names, the addresses of students correct has been an enormous challenge, which only got finished at the end of October.
May I ask a question to anybody on the committee that is on the call right now? Uh, I know you guys put a lot of work in this and I understand. Would you feel safe if it was your children or grandchildren or niece nephew to walk some of these routes? Or walk the, the length?
Well, I can, I can only talk about my own personal children walked to a bus stop in the district that they lived in, and it was close to one point four miles. It was frankly, or, or along a highway. Um, I, I, I can only speak to that. I can. I cannot speak to Trenton.
Director Hume, you mentioned to me in a conversation we had earlier about a stipulation that, something I think you found in policy, that second graders are to have supervision when walking to school. I never got to to follow up on that with you, so I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I actually, actually, she prepared earlier.
Very good. There are some parameters around all of.
Yeah. The, this is, she says sorting through. This is the procedure from our policy manual of Policy 8110 AR, which is active, which was adopted on September the 6th, 2016. So that was predates your time, I suspect, certainly predates my time on the board. And this is the procedure and the authorities and the guidelines for the busing and student transportation. And it deals with riotous students on buses, what can be done with them, what the discipline is for violations, the bus stop locations and where the list of that is kept, the non-public school, and then supervision for K to 2 student drop off pickup at bus stops. First of all, there is a regulation, not on this page, but on another page, that a bus stop may be up to 1.5 miles from the student's residence, not counting driveways. So that we can actually, were we to consolidate all our bus stops, we could have our students walking a distance of up to 1.5 miles through that. That's part of Policy 810. But it says here, supervision for K to 2 student drop off pickup at bus stops. Supervision is required for students in grades K to 2 during drop off pickup times at all bus stops. Supervising individual may be a parent guardian, a relative, another adult or an older sibling who is no younger than grade three. And the next one is, there is a form attached for that. And the next one is supervision for K to 2 students who prefer to walk to from school, no bus. Supervision is required for students in grade K to 2 who prefer to walk to from home to school and not use district buses. Supervising individual may be a parent guardian, a relative, another adult or an older sibling, no younger than grade three. The form attached, I think that replies the one above. So that is it there. It's on our website under under the policies. So the idea.
Maybe that's for a faceless child.
The idea of a five year old heading off their first day, Tara, I'm sorry. The idea of a five year old heading off their first day of kindergarten, walking on their own is not possible. That's part of the policy.
Right, but that's the policy, but that's for some faceless child. That's not for your child or my child, because I'm not going to go sending my child walking a mile and a half to school. And I can say that when my kids were in school, I I live less than a mile and a half from Francis Willard. And I asked for my kids to ride the bus and I was told, no, there's a policy in place and I had to get my kids to school. So I did that. So I can say that it was enforced. I don't know what the equity issues are now. But when when I asked, that that was enforced. I was not allowed, my children were not allowed to ride the bus. But I I'm hoping maybe we can take a step back here as to why we're even having this conversation. I think we're having it because a letter went out that I haven't even seen other than on Facebook. And I don't know how many kids it affects. So I'm wondering if I could just be brought up to speed as to why this letter went out, who sent it out, who gave the directive to send it out? And how many children are affected?
And to that point, Mrs. Yanni, Mrs. McTiernan and I have already had the conversation that should information like this be distributed, it will be included in the packet. That very often happens. It did not happen in this case. We will, we will make sure that that is the practice going forward.
As I understand it, Dr. Martin, this wasn't just one person's decision. It was a decision by the committee and it was made by the entire committee, not by any individual. And I understand, I'm trying to forgive me, if you can correct me on this Superintendent McKinnon, please do. But as I understood it, this was came up when we were looking at at the special meeting we had on last week, on the on the Thursday. There was a consideration that the changing guidelines from PDE and DOH might result in a very short term, a very quick return to hybrid schooling, that there was some question. Now, as it turned out, the board decided to stay virtual until such time as teachers were more comfortable and we had at least started the vaccination process. But there was a possibility that schools would have been opening very shortly. And as I understand it, I think the intention behind this letter being sent out was to inform the parents whose children were no longer entitled to bus transport or were in fact within the walk zones on safe walk routes of the change in order to give them time to prepare. Now, I'm probably totally wrong. I've probably spoken totally out of school, but that was my understanding of it. And that it that while I personally would certainly agree that in the context of the larger deliberations and discussions we've had this evening from Mr. Shaw, which has made a lot of stuff much clearer to me, had the letter gone out in the context of this broader discussion, it would have been far easier to explain and for people to accept. I don't know how many students were affected, however, so somebody would know, I'd be grateful.
I can give you that number. It's a, it's about 3,800 students are walkers.
Mr. Shaw, I have a question. Two of my children received the letter, but they never rode the bus. So was the intent of this letter to go out to all students regardless of if they've ridden the bus? Or was it supposed to go out to students that were going to be impacted in a in a change? And to that effect, my, I have an older, I have four children in the district. I have an older son that attends Northeast. I do not live outside of the 1.5 miles, but he has been bused. So but I did not get a letter for him. So I'm just wondering what the criteria was for the letter? And just if if it was the intent to send it to all those who are no longer supposed to be bused? Or if there was maybe some?
That was the intent was to inform all walkers across the district, all 3,800 at the same time, rather than attempt to find out which students had been changed due to any decisions we made versus which students had not, not been walking in the past because they'd been in a different school or a different location. So we just felt it was necessary to send the letter to everybody.
If if I may speak, and Director Hume, I think you did an excellent job explaining where, how we got to the letter. As, and again, I'm going to go back. This administration has been in cleanup mode in everything that we we've done. So we continue to, this is another example of we have a policy. There's no such thing as a have haves policy. You either follow it or you don't. So this was, this is not a new project. This spent, this has been working, this has been worked on since 2018. You know, I spoke to my staff about, you know, getting things in the Friday packet. We understand that. And and so this is more about, I understand that everybody wants to focus on the letter because it obviously caused, it caused some disruption in the community, which I understand. But we're going to continue to follow policy. And how, I I guess my question is that, and and I always say this, one of the major roles of the board, but I'm always asked, what what is my role? One of the major roles of the board is to set policy. And the major role of administration is to follow policy. So these letters went out and the decision was made that the letters went out to all students. The problem here is I want, I want to, you know, in asking questions like I asked, for example, how many students does this affect? Well, I'm just going to give you an example. If a student at Armstrong did not qualify, is in fifth grade and they didn't qualify or they qualified for transportation, let's say they qualified, then they go to Northeast and they only live two blocks away and now they don't qualify. So for us to show a comparison between last year and this year, you have to realize that eighth graders going to the high school may have qualified, but now don't because we don't provide transportation to the high school unless you're special education and require that in your IEP, you're homeless or you're fostered. So to give you numbers of how many this, how many does this affect from one year to the next? I'm not sure that we are able to do that. As everyone also knows, our our enrollment is down. So there's, we're down 750 kids, 800 kids. So those numbers and then the financial impact, I believe, Director McAndry, you asked that question. I believe there's still more work to be done because consolidation of routes has to happen, all of the things that were spoke spoken about tonight. So I I need to focus on, I need to take the focus. I I understand that this is emotional. But I need to, I need to let everyone know that the directive from my, from myself to my staff is to follow policy. Now, I will say to the board, if the board doesn't like this policy, then the majority of board can make a change. But I want to continue to focus on this administration is going to continue to do the right thing. And we're going to continue to do what what the policy state. And so rather than playing the blame game, I'd really like to concentrate on what are the facts here? The facts are, a lot of work has gone into this process. Should you have received the letter in the Friday packet? Absolutely, absolutely should have. And you didn't, and we fixed that. So we're moving forward now. I can't do anything about that now. I can only say that we fixed that and everybody understands that. I can also say to you that now we have an issue which some board members feel strongly about, and I understand. But at this point now, in my opinion, the discussion needs to be taken to a committee for a discussion on how we move forward. And let's move forward because where we are today is still, it says 1.5 and 2. So as of today, we're still going to follow policy and we're still going to continue moving forward with where we are today to fix that any transportation issues that we have. And that is all I have at this time.
I'd like to clarify one thing since Mr. Shaw mentioned 3,800 students. And I think Mrs. Dempsey drove the point home that this was an effort to inform all students in the walking zone. And I I know that we are not at a point where we can discuss who in particular was affected for this one reason alone. But we have determined that there are 334 new walkers from the 1920 to the 2021 school year. And of those 334 new walkers, it is true that it is for many reasons that they have become new walkers. Perhaps they have moved, perhaps they are impacted by the implementation of this policy. There there are a variety of reasons that have been mentioned. But I I just wouldn't want to see that 3,800 number be misunderstood. Is that accurate?
Director Gill, oh, sorry. PowerPoint that was shown, it did say that there was 12 or so. I don't, I'm totally mistaken because the video kept playing. I went back to YouTube to see. It said there were 200 students that were within the walking zone that I don't, I don't want to misspeak, but the slide said something about 200 students in particular.
I also just want to point, I just want to point out just to, just because it was brought up about, this is actually not a board policy. 810 is an overarching policy, but what Roe pointed out is actually an admin regulation. So I don't know what control the board has over, you know, if this were to something that would snowball, what the board has, what power the board has over an AR in terms of changing an admin regulation? Because that's the admin, the AR is what defines, somebody has to walk with them and all those different parameters.
That's, that is an AR, sorry.
I believe, Michelle, that the the actual policy 810 says state guideline or board policy. So my interpretation of this is that we are following the state guideline.
Correct.
In the case of the middle school students, because of the blended grades between elementary and secondary students, the AR determines 1.5 miles. But the conversation that we could entertain if we we get consensus would be to have a policy where we were going beyond the state guideline.
Got it, okay.
You're, you're.
Could I, could I make a, can I put something forward here? Because it seems to me that everything Superintendent McTiernan said is right. We are in one sense the Congress, she is the administration. We set the policy and what's to be done and the administration does it. And this was a policy that was set, you know, in 2015. It was set quite a while ago, was amended in 2018, but it was not amended substantially. What I'd like to say is, I know there's an awful lot going on and changes in all of this. But what I would like to ask the administration, can you, can we, do we have a method where we can record and analyze any impact on attendance or academic standards or any area at all of the operations that that would, that could be affected by the correct implementation of this policy? I mean, what we're saying to me is I am, to cut to the chase, we had a policy, it wasn't being followed. We've spent 18 months with enormous work and great degree of specificity, working out a way to act actually follow the policy. So if we could work out the impact of correctly following our policy, that would be great. And if there's any way we can collect the data and analyze it and perhaps come back to the board at the end of, you know, at the end of the year, the end of the second quarter of 2021, 22, so you can do all that. But if it seems to me that that is the appropriate time for us to discuss whether or not we want a policy change, that we can't suddenly say, oh, my God, we didn't like this, even though it's our policy, let's go in now and change it. Why don't we get some data? Why don't we get some analysis? Why don't we get some information? And then if we wish to discuss whether or not the policy needs to be adjusted, the appropriate time, I think, is to look at the data gathered over the policy being correctly implemented in line with what's decided. I don't know, that that would be my request to the administration.
Yeah, and I understand that it wasn't our packet, but we could have got at least a heads up that like those letters were going to be out soon. I'm not seeing a copy of it being missed in our packet, I understand.
That's your committee, Sean, your trans, your vendor relations, transport's yours. Transportation's yours. I mean, so the traffic, I was, traffic committee is your committee, sweetie.
Yeah.
I was wondering if maybe we could get a cost analysis, this breakdown of, I think the proper, if we can have a cost analysis of what it would cost us to transport students to certain parameters or such, so that we can start digging into this and seeing what exactly we're we're looking at. I do fully understand this is not a new policy by any means. And I truly do appreciate administration sprucing up, what needed to be spruced up in different places. You're doing your job as you're supposed to do, so nobody could be mad at you for that. And that's really where we need to focus our attention to is change in policy and maybe even change in state regulations, which obviously we can advocate for. But because we won't be, we won't get that funding from, if we decide to transport closer, we won't get that funding, which is a whole nother thing we could talk about in terms of advocacy and such. But I think a cost analysis maybe is a good approach to, you know, start the conversation of, okay, if we we look at these students, this is what we're looking to do moving forward, just so we can have an idea of, you know.
Yeah, and just to. I agree with Catherine on that 100%. We we need that cost analysis. But just, just if I could get an answer, like, I know we're saying 3,800 walkers, but how many are we really affecting? Do we know that? Like, is it just 100? Because if it's maybe just 100, maybe we can, we can understand what we need to do to help those 100. Like, I I guess that's what, I'm not upset that I didn't get the letter. I'm just upset that I don't know how many kids were truly affecting by this and what our savings is or what the cost analysis is regarding those kids.
So Tara, Tara, what I'll, I'll tell you what I know. First of all, I didn't even know the letter went out. I didn't see it and I haven't seen it yet, okay? The committee was working on it. I think when Dr. Levine announced that we might need to go back to school, I think that's when the group that was working on the letter moved it forward. Okay, we all know perhaps it wasn't the right timing and should have, I believe it should have gone out with the bus letters, to be honest. If you're going to do one, we should have done both together anyway. And definitely you should have seen them. That being said, all I did was look at pure numbers, okay? When, when you heard the number 334, that seems to be the difference from last year to this year. But can I tell you that there are 334 different children? I can't tell you that because unless we matched up name of student with name of student last year to this year, which we don't have those records, believe it or not. Okay, so that's the problem. We tried to do that last week and trying to look for those records to be able to do that. Okay, so that's the problem. We tried to do that last week and trying to look for those records to be able to do that. Now, we, I think we were able to pair that three hundred and thirty four down to around two hundred. Again, again, I can't speak to that. I didn't do that work myself. Okay? But I can tell you, we were trying to get you know, a child who may have ridden a bus last year and now is a walker. But again, we don't have those discrete numbers. I can tell you, it's not five hundred. I can tell you it's not a thousand. Okay? What is it? Two hundred? Is it a hundred and fifty? Is it, I can't tell you that. Okay, we, we did try to find that data, like even old bus lists to try to go back and, and check those and we, we weren't able to receive that. So then we went to the buildings and said, you must have that data. Well, you know, some students rode and then they didn't, and then we didn't. So my apology, but the data.
Yeah, I, I think Dr. Fine and to sum it up and, and Director Yanni, I asked the same question that you just asked. Same exact question. Problem is that, as you heard earlier, October of twenty twenty is when they efficiently started using Transfinder. So previous to that, it's pen and paper. So with like all of our records, we're trying, it's not like a push of a button where we can say this many students that rode at this school and now how many of those students did not go to another school but are still in that school that didn't get transportation? And so to, to give you an answer, I wish we could because I want the answer. That, that's what I would like to know too, but we don't have it. And I know that, I know that one of the members of the committee did send out a information to the principals and was trying to collect that information based on what the principals knew from last year to this year. But again, is it going to be a hundred percent accurate? No. But are we trying to figure out how many students were in the walk zone? Were given transportation, now don't qualify, didn't leave that school because that'll be another thing if they go to another school. We're trying to figure, I believe that they're trying to figure that data out. I, I don't believe it's going to be a hundred percent accurate. No. But I believe moving forward now, if, if the software will be used the way it's supposed to be used, that we will be able to hopefully answer your questions a lot better as we sit here next year.
Can I make two points? The first is that that will not give us the information on the children living two or three houses up the street who weren't given transportation. And that to me is one of the biggest issues about this, the children who were given transportation and the children who weren't given transportation, even despite geographic proximity and the same walking route. The second point I'd just like to pick up on is something Dr. Fine and said. This district, and I, and I, I know I'm a newcomer, but one of the things I love about America and what I love about where I live, which is in the Hill section and Prescott, is that the passion people have for their community schools and the passion people have for their elementary school that's close by is amazing. A lot of that comes from the walkability. And I think that we could unleash a can of worms because we, we know from the recovery plan, we have to consolidate buildings. We know that eleven elementary schools is far too many to service the number of elementary students we have. And that's not counting the seven hundred that we've lost this year because they'll probably come back with a vengeance next year and we will be back around. But our numbers over the last few years have been fairly, you know, statistically consistent. If we decide that busing is the way we want to go, if we decide that, then that is going to, if we're going to put a child on a bus to go a mile to this school, how much easier is that going to make it for us to make the decisions we need to make to consolidate schools? Because we both, we all know, one of the great factors we take into account is the passion people feel for their community school and for that. But we are going to have to close schools. We are going to have to close facilities. We're not closing schools because a school isn't a building. I, I should rephrase that. We're going to be closing school buildings. And if we're saying that a mile and a half is too big a walk zone and we're going to cut the walk zone down to a mile or five hundred yards or everybody gets bussed, then we are cutting against the argument for community schools because once we put those children on buses, then I believe that we, we cut down the arguments for maintaining the community values of our schools. So I think we need to be, we need to look at this policy perhaps, but I think we need to look at it six months or a year from now when we've seen the impact of the correct implementation of the policy that was decided. Because we can't judge it from a faulty implementation that's been up to this point. And I, and I just would say, I would run the flag up the flagpole, a red flag up the flagpole. If you want to put kids on buses, what happens when you start busing children? You do diminish the argument for maintaining the community around the school.
Going forward, when the transportation committee has updates and meets, since I'm the chairman of it, can I get updates, email updates or something?
I, I, I believe that, yeah, I mean, I think moving forward and regarding this topics, topic. I believe that the committee should put together, yes, weekly updates, and I know that they can do that. They meet weekly. And I think Director McCandor, absolutely you should get it. I think everyone should get it. And, and we can put that into place.
Thank you.
I do have, I, I have a question. If we are working on a cost analysis or if that comes down the pipeline, I would just encourage that if we maybe also include if it wasn't already thought of. If there are still CDC guidelines, like let's hope and pray we're back in school in March. If there are CDC guidelines in place that limit the avail, you have like, you know, transportation right now for my son to go to a basketball game, it's one student masked per seat. Does that, do our costs go up? Do we have to adjust busing routes or can we, can we consolidate busing routes at that point in time? Just putting it out there in terms of if we develop a cost analysis, kind of piggybacking off of Tara and Catherine. Just I, I would like to see that as well, what it would cost in, in the current setting and if we have to, you know, adjust, make adjustments for that in, based on the guidelines.
Mr. Shock, can you, can you address that with regards to the, you know, with regards to the current CDC guidelines? And how many, how many students were we planning? We were going back hybrid, so everything we've been planning has been hybrid. Everybody's aware of that in an A B schedule. Can you address how many students we were putting on, on a bus?
So we would be putting about half of the seventy two capacity and we seldom hit seventy two, so it's more like maybe sixty five. So half of that would be on the bus. So on a seventy two passenger bus, three to a seat, there are twenty four seats. So to, you're going to have some seats with one rider and some seats with two riders at, you know, thirty five, thirty six seats.
I, I, I guess my question is, we will definitely do a cost analysis. That's definitely going to happen. I'm just not sure when we will be going back in a traditional setting. And based on that, we're not preparing for that right now. We're preparing for the hybrid. So I believe that the cost analysis the board would want, am I correct? I don't want to speak for the board. The cost analysis the board would want would be the cost analysis with the traditional versus a traditional. Last year to traditional versus this year's traditional?
Yes.
When you go back traditional, you're going, we've always assumed you're going to be able to fill the bus as you have in the traditionally, you still did.
Right. And, and I believe that, Mr. Shock, in your analysis, and I certainly don't want to speak for you, and if I'm wrong, please tell me. But I believe that, is it correct to say that in the past, we could have done a better job with efficiency and how many students we placed on the bus along with route efficiency? We were not maximizing a student capacity. Is that true?
Correct.
Okay, so again, those are all factors that, that we need to improve upon, but I believe that will, will impact the financial impact, you know, the financial piece that you're all looking for.
May I ask how long we've had?
Well, I think Gretchen was going to say something. Pardon me.
Thank you. Mrs. McTernan, how early is a school open before school starts? So that if parents wanted to drop their children off before they went to work, either walking them there or driving them there, how early can a student be dropped off at school before the school day starts?
Well, that's a problem because we have no supervision. So this, the, the building normally, you know, realistically, the building opens. We open the building, I'm going to say fifteen minutes before, ten to fifteen minutes before, because we do have to, in order to have supervision. For example, if we pay a teacher to come in, we have to pay. So otherwise, it's just the administration that's in the building and obviously the administration can't supervise all of those students. It's, that's a safety issue also. So not a great answer, but that's the truth. We do, we don't have enough supervision to have. So we encourage parents to drop off right close to the start of school.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bro.
Oh, no, I, I, I think I said it. I've forgotten it now.
I think Gretchen makes an excellent point in just trying to think outside of the box to come up with a way to make this work for everybody. So that, that's, you know, maybe if, if that's the case, maybe that is something we could look at, trying to figure out how we could help some of these parents out in that way if they needed to drop off. I mean, I don't know then what that expense would be, but I think that's a good idea. And maybe there's community members that have ideas on things we could come up with. It's really like our community looking out for everybody. So that, I think that's a great thought, Gretchen.
I agree. I think that's a good point because like even Haley wasn't, I mean, we have to think financially driven to, but also ways to help the community. So that's a good point to seek out advice. Sorry. See what everyone recommend, you know, community support and whatnot, because for example, I live two streets over, so I don't qualify for busing. But I also would be a couple of minutes late for work because Haley's door didn't open until the time I was supposed to be at work. So I definitely, you know, is even with busing or without busing, that's, I think, something that we can maybe take a look at to see how we could potentially maybe help.
And I, I think at, at one point as we were preparing for this meeting, that the conversation did come up that there might be the potential of, and I, I, I hope that my, I am recalling this conversation and making any sort of sense with it at all. But that there might be some sort of system where parents could bring concerns forward, whether it was a concern with the hazardous route. And, you know, maybe there is even room for bringing concerns like this forward and then, then bringing that to a conversation where we could troubleshoot some of these issues. So I don't, I don't want to put the cart before the horse because I, I feel like that was something that was maybe a, a next step, but that there would be the opportunity to, to bring some of that information forward. And, you know, certainly we could brainstorm about whether it is being able to open a, a building early or as I think Ro and I had a conversation about walking buses, you know, creating some, some communication in neighborhoods to make sure that, that parents are working together to, to meet some of these needs. So, you know, I, I think, I think creative as well as practical solutions.
Walking, walking buses are where you get one parent walking, right, people, twelve kids holding hands or things. Because it, it conjured up, even though I'd said it to you, it conjured up a lovely image in my head of the sort of the magic school bus. I do remember what I wanted to say. The thirty four hundred walkers we have currently have all walked to school within the radius of the new walkers who are now walking and not getting a bus. We are, you know, let's take a rough estimate of, say, two hundred people who previously got lost transportation, but now have, are walking, are now walkers. They will be walking through exactly the same area, past exactly the same people of concern, past exactly the same crime ridden dens of iniquity, plus all, through all of it. That was a joke. I'm sorry. One shouldn't make jokes, but one, one does say these things. I'm sorry, Katie, I saw your face. I'll take that one back.
I guess I'm not hiding my emotions well. I guess I'm not hiding my emotions well now, Ro.
I never do, but that's what you see is what you get and you'll never get a lie out of me. What I'm saying is that we've got thirty four hundred walkers who already walk through these areas. And we either have to say it's completely hazardous for those thirty four hundred who walk or we have to accept that the people who are now walking who were previously bussed are facing exactly the same, neither more nor less concern than the people who are already walking. It's either a concern for the new bus, the new bus to walkers or it's a concern for all the walkers. I think we just have to accept that this is going to be a period of adjustment, that it's going to be a period of change, that it's not going to be to some people's. It's obviously going to be difficult for some people, but it's difficult for a lot of the parents in this district to have, know things. I am very, very strongly, very, very strong about the equity issue too, that it needs to be sure that we apply our policies equitably to all our students. I, I, that's one of my great things and I'm sorry, Kate.
No, that, that's, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you on that, bro. I, I do think of a policy as a policy and it need, needs to be applied across the board. That is, that is absolutely the truth. So do we have anything else on this matter, Mr. Doherty? You, you seem to be.
Yeah, Director Gil Martin, thank you. And I'll be very, very brief. First of all, this was an outstanding conversation and, and, you know, certainly I see the merits on, on all sides. But I'm going to say that, you know, first of all, thank you, Mr. Shock. His presentation is outstanding. I mean, he's our transportation expert and we learn a great deal from him every time we meet with him. But one of my primary focuses wasn't so much on the day to day. My focus was really on route efficiency and following policy because we're in the, in the final stages of preparing an RFP to go out for transportation services. And within that, and Dr. Fine, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but within that, we have to give them a scope of what we expect to transport and how many vehicles we're potentially looking at. And I think that really became a, a, you know, in addition to preparing to go back for a hybrid, but really, you know, it kind of hit the accelerator when we were trying to prepare for this RFP because I think the RFP has to go out relatively or in the very near future. So I, I know that that was, you know, one of the driving forces and that's kind of what my involvement was, was making sure that our, you know, we have efficient routes or that our routes are being efficient. So when the RFP goes out, we're giving potential bidders, potential contractors, good information on exactly what our district needs. So this, this conversation couldn't have happened at a better point. Because if the board is so deciding, you know, to make changes, I mean, that would almost have to occur in the, in the very, very near future. Because that RFP and, and Dr. Fine can speak to that, it will be going out very, very shortly.
Mr. Doherty, can I ask about that? And you're, you're all going to swear at me, you know, you are because I'm obsessed with this. But if we return to hybrid this year, for example, if we go back in March, that RFP, so I know the kids are already split into A and B groups. But I'm, I'm probably fairly certain that those A B groups, your, the bus stop wasn't taken into consideration. So how are we going to manage, I'm sorry, I'm beating this, but this is something, this is a question that I have that, one of those things that keeps me up that I think about where, you know, I know the A B groups have been defined, I think. And so if we go back hybrid and you're putting out an RFP and, and we're trying to work through the busing of these students, I, I, I know they probably weren't split based on their bus stop. So have we thought about that? I know, you know, there's committees to put back to, there's committees for hybrid for, in terms of instructional curriculum. Is, is that being kind of, again, I brought it up under the cost analysis part, but I'm just wondering how that plays out.
Well, the RFP would be for, if we were full goal, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be consideration for the hybrid. That would be for, for next year.
So it, so, but what if we still have to maintain those guidelines in the fall?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you right now how the A B schedules were split. They were split based on the cafeteria. Because we had to, we had to keep our cafeteria numbers, you know, limited.
But the bus, the bus stops wouldn't change, so I'm not sure I'm, I'm understanding your question, Michelle.
No, the bus stops would not.
Are the same for the hybrid, no matter whether you're A B, it doesn't matter.
I'm talking about total kids on a bus. So you, you didn't split, to, to make sure you have the correct number of students on a bus in a route. For example, the A B split, like let's say, I'm, I'm totally making this up here, but let's say the A group at Northeast, it's all of East Scranton and all the kids on bus seventy five. How do we? I'm just thinking, trying to think through how that planning is happening and, and how does that impact busing, transportation? Does, is that something that Transfinder can help assist with? And, and if this guideline for transportation where you have to reduce by half or whatever it is continues on into the twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty two school year, what happens then with the RFP and, and, you know, are we kind of, is there contingency there? Like what happens if this doesn't go away, if this?
Well, I think, I mean, I'm going to just chime in, not that I have a, a lot of experience with an RFP for transportation, but I think everything has changed. I mean, we're in, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. I believe that as we work those, we work through the RFP, things are. I believe that as we work those, we work through the RFP, things are going to have to be considered. And again, I'm going to, um, ask Mr. Audi if, uh, if he's available. But, you know, things will have to be in this RFP that probably never had to be in again, Director Dempsey. So to answer your question, I don't think anybody can ever answer it because I don't know that anybody on this call, even though we looked at Dr. Fine and to answer all the questions that we never faced before. I don't think she ever went through a pandemic before either and had all of these issues. So, um, you're asking great questions and I think all of these factors have to be considered because if and when we do go back, um, and, and like you said, we may start out next year. Who knows? I hope not. I hope we're traditional, but we can't guarantee that. So there's going to have to be factors considered when we're doing that. I think that's the best way we can answer you right now.
I think, I think that's, I, that's all I was asking, just making sure that that was kind of rolling around in, in, in the, in this RFP, when you push it out, they're like, hey, if, if we are still hybrid and we need this, can we build that in as a contingency or whatever?
Right. But am I, am I correct that the current contract is through next year, twenty one, twenty two?
Yes, you are.
Even though the RFP is happening now, we are still through the entire next school year.
Yes, yes, you are, you are. But, um, two points. We're trying to get, um, uh, more interest in, uh, getting more competition for bidding. Okay. And that's why all of this had to happen in succession. We had to know how many walkers were walking before we could determine the number of buses that we needed. The efficiencies that we all talked about tonight was, was to help us get to the number, as Mr. Shock said in his presentation, for the RFP. We have to know whether we're going out for ninety nine buses or for fifty nine buses or for seventy two buses or thirty seven buses. And I realize that that's a wide variance, but let me tell you, that's where you've been. That's where district has been. So the RFP, in order to effectively write an RFP that would be beneficial to the district, we have to know those numbers. And that's why the walker number had to come first and then who's riding the buses. Now, whether we're hybrid or not, is going to have to, as Missy just said, is going to have to be written within that RFP to allow us to be flexible and to what we will need to pay for if we're not running those buses. And you have that with one contractor, um, you haven't always had it with all contractors. So that's the piece where I think what we will do in the future, what September will look like, we don't know. But what we do know is it's, it may be different from what it used to be under normal circumstances. So we're, you know, we need to know that we have to add that, even if it's an addendum piece to the RFP. So, um, all of those steps had to happen to get the right number that we're going to ask for a bid upon. And, and I, 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 I hope everybody understands that this was not happenstance. This has been in the works for a long time because you don't have, uh, you haven't had efficiency. So, um, asking to pay for more buses than you should, you've heard that, that comment in the past and we're trying to avoid that in the future.
We've had Trans Finder for quite a while, have we not, Dr. Fine?
You've had it for six years. It's only been since really October that it's been operational. But you've had it in your district for six years. Yes.
And, and going forward, now that the data's in there, now that we've got that presumably, you said it was now talking to e-school?
Finally, yes. Since the end of October, yes.
We're doing good work tonight on translations, both with the wonderful EDL stuff and this, this is good stuff. So in future, going forward, with the people that we've trained on this software, and I must argue congratulations to the people who've done that because I was so impressed with the detail and the research of Mr. Shock's presentation. So going forward, it's not going to be anything like the same program, is it? It's going to be almost a plug and play?
Yes, hopefully. Yes. Again, once the data was cleaned up, if you will, and we had the accurate names on the accurate addresses with the students assigned to the accurate schools, and believe me, that took a long time, then we can start, we run a nightly upload. So if your, your grandchild moves across the city and has to attend a different school, that upload catches that, that the night that that data is input is, uh, placed in, um, e-school. So that's a, that's a major accomplishment.
Fantastic. I look forward to, I, I really hope that once we've, um, that once we've had, once the situation's been in operation and we've got some analysis and some data, um, that we can come back and, um, the weekly updates from the transportation committee and Mr. McCandrew will be able to come back to us in six months or so and let us know what impact this is having, whether it's, you know, and, and a whole bunch of stuff. And I think that I know that some people have been upset by the, by the revelation of the walking zones. But I think that on the whole, this is a very positive step for the, for the district.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else or can we?
Director, Director Gil Martin, I would just like to thank Mr. Shock. I know this was a difficult, difficult topic, uh, tonight and we appreciate your expertise. Uh, and I really think it showed in your presentation and, um, I hope, I hope we didn't make it too difficult for you. But thank you for everything that you're doing for us, um, you know, and helping us, um, improve the transportation department. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I think, I can't tell you, I, I keep going back to a day in the, at the recovery committee meeting in the boardroom. So we know how, or the classroom on the second floor, we know how long ago that was. And where you were then to where things are now is remarkable. So thank you and thank you.
Totally agree.
With us for this conversation this evening. So, okay. Thank you. Director Yudi, budget and finance.
Yes. Under budget and finance, we will have a motion to approve the bill list, the exception bill list, the capital improvement bill list, the delinquent tax report, the treasurer's report, repository sales, any budget transfers. We will have a motion to approve, um, the disposal of assets and a motion to approve the award to the single tax office audit.
Thank you. Community relations, Director Fox. It's not written there, but we will be adding the motion to approve the donations.
Do you see my face?
I did. I saw the look of panic in your eye. I got.
And I don't see anything. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
No problem at all. Thank you very much. And thank you for a good meeting tonight. We have nothing under education. Operations, Director Hume.
Uh, yes, we have a discussion of the potential motions for the owner's representation and capital project building, the specific budgets. So I will throw that to Mr. Doherty.
I'm actually going to throw that to Mr. Laffey.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this one. Good evening, everyone. As, as Mr. Doherty has reported many times, uh, our owner's rep has been on site now for a few weeks, Dewey Engineer. Uh, they were appointed, uh, at the end of twenty twenty. There's been, uh, bi-weekly meetings, I believe, uh, for various committees. There is their initial, uh, committee, uh, implementation team and also their review team. They're preparing, uh, specific, all-inclusive budgets for, for various projects that they've been assigned to, to work on. These are going to include almost every cost where we hope to, you know, um, only incur related to these projects, everything from your design down to any licenses, insurances. So they're going to be very encompassing and, and, and very thorough. These will be preliminary. Obviously they're going to have, you know, some anticipated construction costs, some anticipated, um, engineering fees that, uh, or estimated, excuse me, uh, that they, that they've compiled based on a database of similar products that they have access to. What we would like to propose is to, you know, bring these, you know, preliminary budgets to, to the board for review and approval, which would then I think authorize the district administration and, and the owners represent, representatives to begin the, the bidding process. Obviously, like all projects, um, when the bid results come in, um, you'll be asked to, to award those and then those budgets will be updated as, uh, as well. So there, there's a potential that we may have some motions on Monday evening. I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
Thank you. And then we have a discussion on the difference between a fourteen day quarantine and a ten day quarantine.
Thank you, Director Hume. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Generaliza to handle.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Uh, yes, there's been a recent study from the CDC and Department of Health within the last few weeks to, and a lot of districts have adopted this to reduce for students and employees to return to work instead of, uh, experiencing to accelerate from a fourteen day quarantine to a ten day quarantine. And there's really nothing in any of our policies that were been recently adopted from, uh, PSBA volume back in August that even discusses, uh, a quarantine. But we do have in our COVID protocols, some mention on it. And if this is approved, they could quickly make that adjustment on our document.
Michelle, you're the, you're our COVID expert and you, I'm sure have the research on that in your head.
Yes. And if it's, if, if someone is, has a negative test within a seven day period, they are, they're, it's recommended that they could come back after a ten day quarantine.
Right. Um, although they can show symptoms on that tenth day. But my, my question is the, the fourteen day versus the ten day. So I thought that was specific to healthcare workers, but is that now changed? Cause that was, is that, does that now, is that kind of like a blanketed approach where the ten day quarantine is being utilized?
Yeah, I think it's, I think for employees, employees and, uh, in school, in school cases, students too.
Okay. So the ten day quarantine, for example, if, um, I developed COVID, I have four children in three buildings and a husband in a fourth building. So I could potentially take out four buildings in Scranton. Would everyone in my house would have to quarantine? Even if they all tested negative, they would have to quarantine for those ten days?
Correct. Yes.
If I was positive.
Yes. And you would have to stay quarantined within your house. Yes. Away from each other for a ten days. And if you cannot, uh, in some cases, there's, you know, care for an elderly person in the household where they just can't, you know, they, they have to continue to close contact. So on that, that is kind of an example where you cannot, like, remove yourself from close contact. After that person does their quarantine, then you have to do your quarantine. So it, it, it exceeded beyond twenty days in that case.
Okay.
But are our students and our teachers currently quarantining, isolating or quarantining? Cause there's a big difference between isolating and quarantining. What you described then with, um, with Director Dempsey was isolation.
Yes.
Quarantining is a different, is a different issue. I mean, if you, if you have a negative test and you're asymptomatic and you then after seven days have a negative test and remain asymptomatic, the research that I've seen says that the ten day period of quarantine is as effective as a fourteen day period of quarantine, given that a negative test within three days of returning is desirable.
That's correct, Director Hume. I mean, everything that I've read, it's pretty much states what you just said.
Yeah. I mean, the, the, the statistical difference in transmission from people who've quarantined for, for ten days and then return or fourteen days and they then return, I mean, quarantine, not isolation, but quarantining. It's statistically negligible, a- according to what, according to what I've read. And I'm a bit of a, well, I'm a bit, bit of a paranoid junkie about this, really. It's my age. Um, but, but it would seem to me that it would make very little, it would make very little difference to the transmission of the disease and it would make a big difference to the operation of the school and the operation of the students affected. It's four days.
And have we, I mean, I, I know Bert, this is coming from somewhere. Is this, have the, the medical people who worked on the original guidelines weighed in on this at all? Do they, do those individuals feel comfortable with this change?
Yeah. Well, I, I, again, this is directly, I have the documents right here in front of me from the Department of Health and CDC that, you know, recommends it's okay to come back after a ten day period. That's just the studies that I've read from those two, uh, so those two medical experts.
Do we have a means of contact tracing? So somebody, um, has a positive results. Do we have a, a method for contact tracing to see who now has to quarantine in a classroom, in the cafeteria?
Uh, Mr. Generaliza, when you call, um, the individual you deal with at the Department of Health, the local Department of Health, are they still contact tracing or are they not doing that anymore?
Uh, well, since we're not in school, I mean, we haven't come across that situation. I mean, it's pretty much any, any kind of situation or dilemma or where someone has a COVID case. It's pretty much they get it on their own, obviously outside of school through their own families. So, I mean, we have not had a situation where we, we haven't been in school. But once we do, if that situation happens, yeah, we will, we will.
That's a good point. Director Welby, that's a really good point because we haven't had, for example, an individual coming in. The majority of our issues have either been, uh, employees or students calling to let us know that they've tested or dealing with the sports programs.
Right. So, um, I think kind of fleshing something up before we go back to school is going to be important that we have an, some type of in-house contact tracing because we can't rely on the state. We all had, my house all had COVID before Christmas and, um, you know, nobody from the Department of Health called us until weeks into it. So they're not going to be a quick means of contact tracing. So we need some in-house.
The, the process that, just because I know that the, what the other superintendents are, are dealing with right now, the process has been, um, that the individual, uh, there is a, there is a hotline that we have to call. And we call the hotline and it, once it gets to a certain number, and I apologize, I don't know that number because we haven't been dealing with it. But once it gets to a certain number within that building, then we have to shut down the building. So, uh, again, all of those details, you are correct that we will need to, um, to have handle, handle them before we go back. But I know that just from dealing with the other superintendents and listening to them, when an individual student within a class has, has, um, has, has gotten COVID, then everybody in that class has to be contacted and it, it's been, it's been quite a process. So yes, you are correct in everything that you said.
Director Welby or maybe Bert, how does, how far reaching does that contract tracing have to go? So for example, if my husband has a student, um, in his classroom that tests positive, that class, my husband's notified. And then is it, is it every class that that group of students has then come in contact with? Or is it just that individual student and whoever they have come into contact with? Uh, Dr. Director Welby, I don't know if you know the answer to that. I was never really able to kind of grasp that, how that works in a, in a school setting.
So it's, it's just that student and it's forty eight hours from the onset of symptoms. So a contact of a contact doesn't have to trace. So, you know, if, um, if say I had COVID in my classroom, those, those students, they would be made aware that I had COVID and they could potentially be in contact with me. But unless they became symptomatic, then they should quarantine so that they're not around anybody for their fourteen days or ten days if they have a negative test. But the contacts of those students don't need to quarantine as well. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Only if that person that, only if they then test positive, does that have to go further than that? So it doesn't have to go to like the second degree, third degree can stay within the first degree contact.
Exactly. And that's how we're, that's how we're operating in the school districts. And I, I'm sure our nurses are familiar with contact tracing. Once we get, do get back in, if they have a, we have a situation, which we're going to in a school, I, I'm sure they're going to be there to assist us.
I just wanted to make it, um, official because I know we've had some emails and questions. I just wanted to make it official because I know we've had some emails and questions about how we are going to handle contact tracing and, and all of that once we get back into school. So I, I knew you'd have a plan. I just wanted to put it on the record officially.
So we need consensus here, Bert, is that what you're asking for or are we considering?
If we could reduce the time period, and I believe, like I said, most districts have adopted this and have gone from 14 to 10-day.
And just to clarify, that's 10-day if you have a negative result, but it's still 14 days if you were COVID-positive? Or is it 10 days total?
10-day, 10-day total.
Even with a positive?
If, no, if this is for someone with a close contact.
Oh, close, okay.
Close contact, if there's a close contact situation and if they have a negative test result within seven days, they could quarantine a limited 10.
Okay, thank you.
Would everyone like to see us make that change or stay with the 14-day?
I believe it's, the, the situation has changed and I, I believe we could follow the current guideline. I certainly, everything I've read about it and, and I've read about it, it's a very sensible change. We're not going to stop transmission significantly or even marginally by extending the quarantine the extra four days. I, I believe we should go to the 10 days. Do we have a consensus? I don't know.
10 days. 10 days.
Comfortable with that, I'm seeing.
Dr. Welby's saying 10 days. I'm gonna go with what she's saying.
With a negative test.
With a negative test, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Very good. We're okay with that, Bert. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, that's me.
Personnel, Director Cruz.
We will have a motion to approve the personnel report, including assignments, appointments, retirements, leaves of absences and resignations. Thank you.
Policy, Director Dempsey.
Check if I was muted. We'll have a motion to approve the second read policy 214 regarding class rank. We will also have a motion to approve first read policies 103 regarding discrimination and Title IV sexual harassment affecting students, 218.3, discipline of student convicted or adjudicated of sexual assault, and policy 252 regarding dating violence. We will also have a discussion and possible motion to approve the first read of capital eligibility policy.
Thank you.
May, may I just ask Director Dempsey? We are, and I, I apologize totally, I have not looked these policies up and read them. I'm assuming they, they will, Bert does this wonderful job. But these are not policy changes in reaction to the devos changes to the sexual policies, the policies on sexual harassment and all of that. I know the Department of Education put through some policies that loosened them up. We're not changing our policy response to that, are we?
No, to my knowledge, we are not. Bert, you can, you can definitely weigh in here, but I believe this is all in conjunction with PSBA, right? The updates need.
This is sometimes, and Director Hume, you're, you're correct. We just, sometimes there are policies that are updated a couple of times during the course of the year. Sometimes it's, it's not updated for two or three years. But yes, I, I believe you're right. This is another adjustment to policy 103.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm just concerned as, I'm just concerned, I will read it. I will absolutely read it when we get it, but I'm just, I just am very concerned that there were changes that are much higher policy level that may have been flown down. You know, there were laws and things, but if not, we shall press on. I will. I will.
We'll make sure to review all of that.
Yeah.
Special Education, Director Malloy.
We're gonna have a motion to approve settlement agreements, if any, and a motion to approve the NEIU budget.
Very good. And are there any remarks on the NEIU budget or is that something?
I, I believe Mr. Laffey can give you a very short one-sentence that our contribution is down. But Mr. Laffey, you can add to that?
Certainly, Ms. McCarron. The district share for 2021, 22 has been reduced by about $1,645 from our 2021 allocation. It's down to $69,591.69. That is in line with, you know, what we've, you know, similar to what we've seen in prior years. We've been budgeting around $75,000 a, a year for that service. So, you know, it's, everything seems to be in line with prior years and with the budget for 2021.
Thank you. And Vendor Relations, Mr. McAndrew.
Yep, we will have a motion to approve the mom and pop contract.
Very good. All right, thank you for another very thorough conversation this evening. I, I appreciate everybody's concerns. Paul, I see you smiling down there. Did you see me struggling looking for the, the word to describe it? No, but that, as always, I, I know everyone really puts a great deal of, of thought into the conversations we have here and, and the administrators really come prepared to answer our questions. And again, to Mr. Schock, that was, that was a, a very good presentation. Director Hume.
I'm sorry, I did warn you about this, but I'm afraid I did not have time to get the email out to you. I have been asked to pass on an invitation to our board and to, well, really to reading specialists, to administrators, to principals, to anyone who wishes to do it. We have a local organization which has managed to arrange an evening webinar with Dr. David Kilpatrick, who is probably one of the most famous reading, special, reading experts in this country. Getting Dr. Kilpatrick to come exclusively to us for two hours is like getting Mick Jagger to perform at your son's bar mitzvah. He is without doubt one of the greatest proponents of reading science and experts. The evening is going to be on February 18th, 2021, from 6:30 to 8:30. And he particularly, this, this, this is a program that is particularly geared not to reading specialists per se, although they will get something out of it. But it's for people like us, for the board, for people who perhaps don't have that day-to-day intimate relationship with the science of reading. The objectives are to talk about an understanding of the importance of reading success and success in school and in life. Learn about the gap between scientific research in literacy and current classroom practices. Learn about the most common intervention approaches that yield sometimes less than efficacious results. And they will learn about highly effective approaches to preventing reading difficulties and correcting reading difficulties. And given the introduction of the multi-tiered support system very shortly, this is something I certainly would, would like to go to and will be going to. Now, the.
Thank you very much. If, I'm sure we could include some information in the packet with the details.
Absolutely. I will email everyone thing. But just one last point is I do, because it can sound a little bit baffling, I do have some information available about the two core issues that we could do if people want to just have a little bit of the familiarity with it before. And I have a small booklet on orthographic mapping and a small booklet on phonological awareness.
Very good. Then those, we can get those in the packet, so.
I'm very happy to distribute them, but I just wanted to let not only the board know, but also the administration, the teachers and the public.
We all set? Okay.
Yes.
You have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second, second.
All in favor?